With Well Shark today.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Such a bummer.
We we rescheduled till October.
Fingers crossed. So I take taking all the kids, the whole, the whole thing. Oh, my gosh. Wow.
My parents live down there now, so we were gonna go visit them for a couple of weeks.
What what city?
Perth.
Perth, okay. My dad actually grew up in Brisbane.
Okay.
And they were, they were actually in Australia. Um. Wallace was all broken. Everything was starting to break out, and then they went to New Zealand, and I'm like, you guys gotta get home, and they're like, it's fine. And I'm like, no, really, you have to get home. They got back within time, but.
I would have stayed in New Zealand.
Seriously, they're doing so well.
Well.
Well, it's like the cleanest country in the world, so.
I I I love New Zealand.
It's like Lord of the Rings there.
Yes.
It is. It's awesome.
All different climates there, which is awesome.
Well, now you guys can go to Chubbies for spring break. Every night.
We have, we have eaten at Chubbies, the, the Happy Dragon, and Brookers, all of the above.
Yeah. And then repeat, right?
Yes, yes, rinse then repeat.
Yeah. Should we, are we, are we gonna leave our microphones on tonight, Morgan?
I think we should.
Okay.
You know, I'm, yeah, we were gonna have all of the, the council members with their video and their audio off. And then everyone else will be muted without video. If they want to speak, then it just raise their hand, and then if the mayor calls on them, I can, I can unmute them.
Did you say to turn our video off or leave it on?
Start video.
You can keep it on.
Okay.
Yeah, so Julie, you need to turn yours on or ask to turn it on, because we don't have a video view.
Oh, she's gonna start it later.
Or you turn it later.
I am doing something right now, so I'll turn it on later. I latered you.
Sounds good.
I get it. Okay.
I just like Tyce's beard. That's what I have to make reference of now that I just got here.
It's very nice.
It's my project.
It's my project.
Everyone has to have one right now.
Hey, you can only do so much, right?
That's right. So I, I think we're pretty much ready whenever you guys wanna get going.
Okay, excellent. The time is six o'clock. It's April 8th in the year 2020. And it's Wednesday, and I would like to open the city council meeting. Tyce, can I call on you, my main man, to give invocation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our most gracious Father in heaven, as we prepare to begin deliberations tonight in Vineyard City Council, we would ask thy blessings be upon us. And above all, upon all our residents, as we are now under difficult circumstances given the coronavirus. May thy blessings be with those who are suffering, and may, may ye grant patience to those, especially our beloved children, as they toil without the normal circumstances. We give thee thanks for our beautiful city and for all the blessings we have received. And we say it's in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to open this time to public comments. Morgan, did anybody submit any public comments prior to the meeting?
Uh, didn't get any. No, I, yeah, we haven't received anything.
Okay, um, let's see. Let me pull up my participants. This is a time for anyone to address the council about things that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone in the participating here tonight that would like to say something, if you go down to the Participants tab at the bottom of your page and you click it, a chat will come up. There will be names on the right-hand side, and it will say mute me or raise hand. Just raise your hand if you'd like to say something, and I'll call on you. If you're having a difficult time finding where the raise your hand button is, you can also, um, I think you can speak in the chat. Morgan, is the chat disabled?
Um, let's see, I believe.
Yes, it's disabled.
Okay. Um, now, Mayor, would you like the, the chat turned on only for public comment, or would you want it just to run throughout the meeting?
Um, let's do it just for public comment.
Okay.
Actually, let's do it for the whole meeting, because last time it was a nice way to be quiet and remind people to, to help them, and I realized that it goes on public comment, all of it, even private messages. So everybody just needs to remember that as your private messaging within the audience or with wherever you're private messaging from.
Great.
Okay. I don't see that there are any comments or any raised hands, so I'm going to skip to the next part or move on to the next part. Um. I don't know if all of you saw, there was an email that went out for the budget that Jake's been working on. If you guys have time to review that and give feedback before the next council meetings, so that we can bring that to the public and have a discussion, that would be excellent. Um, did any council members have anything they would like to report on this evening?
Um.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Yeah, just a, just a quick update from the emergency manager group. Um, you know, as I, as I have the opportunity, I'll just kind of update the numbers that we have. Utah County for COVID, we have a pot, we have 236 positive cases as of yesterday. Um, 15 hospitalizations and two deaths, and we've had a total of about 3,700 people monitored um, in Utah County. So keep in mind, these are, these not, those are the numbers based on what we are being given as the emergency manager roles for cities throughout Utah County statewide. We are at 1,738 state cases as of yesterday with 13 total deaths so far in Utah. They have warned and are continuing to remind us that the next week and a half, two weeks in Utah County in particular is kind of when there, there is, they, they project there's gonna be kind of a ramp up. So be cognizant, be aware, be careful. And I think we're, I, I, I believe we are close to weathering this, but those are the numbers, and I'll keep emailing numbers as I get them, and that's, that's where we're at as of this morning or last night, whenever I got this last email.
John, and just to follow up on that report, our hospitals currently are doing well. Can you talk to a, a little bit about the PPE that's available, the hospitals, any emergency hospitals on your side that you've heard about?
Well, I know that, I know that if you want to schedule an appointment here in Utah County for us, Tempanogus is probably the closest place to do a drive-through test if you need or want to, or think if you think you have COVID, meaning the main symptoms being, and, and anyone can jump in and help me if I, if I miss any symptoms, but the main symptoms being very significant flu-like, pneumonia-like symptoms, fever, shortness of breath, coughing, congestion. The, all of these symptoms, and if they are persisting more than, more than, you know, more than two or three days, you're now I would be thinking I want to know what I'm dealing with at that point, okay? And that's when the point where I would go and find, go to Tempanogus, do the drive-through, get tested. For us in Vineyard, Tempanogus is easily the closest place. So that's what I recommend to our Vineyard residents. If you have symptoms for, you know, a day or two, and they are severe and worsening, go get tested and, and see what you're up against. More than likely, just so you know, you're gonna be told to go home, quarantine yourself, monitor, and they'll, they'll keep tabs on you, because not very many people are being hospitalized with this, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, and the great thing is, if you do feel like you have it, if cold symptoms start coming on, you can go to testutah.com, and then they will walk you through symptoms and when to go in, and they'll even ask for your address and help monitor your situation for you if you want that. So.
And another thing, Mayor, is 911 is very well, uh, the emergency dispatchers are very prepared for um, a kind of directing you quickly to where and where that help can be for something that's maybe not, you know, get the ambulance and fire and police coming, but if you're, if you're worried and you don't know, 911 is prepared to handle those people that just don't know what to do. And so that, that, that's also, even though that's not our go-to, that is a resource as well, and they're prepared for that.
That's great. Thanks, John. Also, just to, um, kind of talk about the other portion of this, our businesses are open and doing well. A lot of well is relative, but they are functioning right now. And so just as a reminder to continue to tell people to um, support them, and if they don't want to go out to do gift cards, and Chris, you might have more to talk about this, but there's loans and additional help that our businesses can, can take on and reach out and get help and support. There's people volunteering their services. Um, but we also have resources at the city to pass out. Chris, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, yeah. So obviously, the two biggest financing availability through the CARES Act. Um, the biggest one is the Paycheck PPP SBA Loan Program. Um. That's had good and bad reviews, depending upon which institution you've been working with. I mean, some of the larger institutions have had a hard time rolling out their platform to get it done. I think we saw, um, some of them just wanting to understand what was required of them as a, as a lender. And so hopefully, you'll see more and more of those larger lenders start to roll that out. Uh, the biggest advice I would give to any small business owner uh, or business owner in general, is reach out to your local contact that you have your banking relationship with, whether that be a financial institution, a bank, credit union, and work through that with them to, to look at that, to help keep your employees paid during the next two months. It's a, it's a good program. Um, opportunity if you use the funds correctly to have it forgiven. And, um, yeah, it, it, there were resources there. Um, the other one that you can look at is the economic disaster loans, EIDL loans. Uh, those are directly through the SBA, and so you'd have to go to the SBA's website and apply directly through the SBA to get those. So and those are the two biggest ones, but, um, in general, I'd say, you know, the, the loan funds for the paycheck, the PPP SBA Loan Program, they're starting to be used, and hopefully it can go to, uh, those people's paychecks to keep them employed during this time.
Mayor, can I, can I add something? For some reason, I, I can't raise my hand because I'm facilitating the meeting, so I hope that's your button in. Um, we, um, so we've been working with MAG and their Economic Development Arm, and, and also, um, the, the state. And so we have been sending the businesses, our business email list, we've sent them emails um, with the, the links and the information to get connected to the grants that Chris has talked about. And so there's, there's some really good opportunities as more funds are made available. Um, uh, opportunities for those, those grants and low-interest loans are gonna be made available. Right now, from what we've been told, um, it's kind of a first-come, first-served. So definitely, if you're a business out there, jump on and get it, get it going. Um, a, a really good resource is the UVU, the Business Resource Center at UVU. Um, and so I would, I would definitely recommend that any businesses contact them, and I'll, I'll, I'll send out, um, we're planning to try and connect with each of the businesses to see how they're doing over the next week or two. Um, and, uh, we're trying to get that information out there as quickly as possible.
Yeah, one, one more comment, Julie, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the biggest thing with these paycheck, um, the PPP SBA loans is, I mean, you basically, if you were in business last year, you take what your payroll was, you're gonna divide it by 12, and then that gives you a monthly average, uh, and then you're gonna times it by two and a half times. So it's supposed to help you get that payroll paid through two months, essentially eight weeks. And the other 0.5, which is really 25% of the loan amount, can be used towards other items. Um, if you use, if, if you don't use a minimum of 75% of that loan amount towards the paychecks, paying your employees, then you, the amount that could be forgiven can be, uh, lowered by the government. So most institutions, honestly, at this point, um, are helping their existing customers first. Um, so that's, that's one big reason. I think the information that Morgan's sending out to the businesses, but something to add into that is I would, I would recommend that they highly reach out to where they're banking, whether it be at a credit union or bank first, because most institutions are helping their customers first, just because the influx of applications right now, depending upon whether the big institutions do it or not, it's, it's overwhelming. It's, it's been long nights and early mornings.
Yeah. That's good information. We had a few people that live within the city that work in banks that are offering their volunteer time. So that's been really helpful. We've added that in some of the emails sending out as these loans have been coming out. So we're really grateful to our residents for supporting and kind of, um, going above and beyond to take care of our businesses, so. Morgan, did you have anything else to add there, or do you mind if I move on?
Yeah, you're, I think Chris covered it great, so.
Okay. Great. We will move into our business item 8.1. This is a discussion and action on the zoning text and map amendment of the town center. We had a combined meeting last week with the Planning Commission. It was a good discussion. A lot of the comments that went on there were, were taken care of during the week, and they made some changes. So Morgan is going to kind of give us an update on the things that each council member, um, kind of added to the list, and you don't have to go by name, just kind of what the changes and new stipulations were, and just, um, where we can start our discussion from there.
Sounds like someone has a blinker on in their car.
All right, sorry, I did the, the screen save, so hopefully you can, or the screen share, and it dropped everything down, minimized it, and I wasn't able to unmute myself, so, uh, back up and go on, um, let me pull this up. Are you able to see, uh, this screen right here, the, the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we see April 8th, 2020, City Council.
Hey, fantastic.
Okay.
Just bear with me. We'll, we'll get this through this. So, uh, what I'll try to do is go through each of the, the changes um, that were requested by the City Council and brought up by the Planning Commission, um, in our April 1st meeting. And so I'll highlight each of these. Um, if you would like to dive deeper, we could definitely do that. The applicant, um, is also prepared some case studies to bring you through, um, similar-type developments. Um, and to show from a parking standpoint how much parking, um, those, um, those developments require per use. And so, uh, without any further deal, kind of just jump through this. Um, so one of the comments was that the, uh, that heritage language he added to the code, and so we added, um, some to the, the purpose statement um, to the general requirements, um, of the open space section, and also made, um, cul- corp, um, cultural and historic monumentation a, um, one of the residential amenities that can be added by, by the, the developer, and we can get into that a little bit more. So we have three different sections, and in working with Tim, um, we'll also add um, more to the general plan when we do the update over, over this next year, the general plan. Um, the, for some reason, I brought this up, it, it popped everything off, so hopefully you can see this whole screen, but, um, the residential um, amenities section has, has changed. Um, and for some reason, now it's, it, it made like some of the text a little larger, so hopefully you can see all this. Um, but these are the proposed changes, and we can jump through a, a few of these. Uh, before the, um, under the eighth mile section, there was, um, there were only six, as well as in the fourth mile radius section, and so they've added quite a few. Um, so, uh, details were also added to each item to ensure that we had, um, high-quality items. Uh, so the secure part of bicycle storage, um, must be covered under surveillance or within public view, community gathering areas. Um, maybe inside of a private building or in the public realm. The meeting rooms have to have tables and chairs, outdoor dining. Um, and then the commercial playgrounds, and then they added the IPEMA certification. That's the International Play Equipment Manufacturers Association, and so we thought that was important, that it need a commercial playground standard. Um, and then water features, we provided, uh, some examples of what those water features can be. Now, anything that's public, um, we will have the opportunity from the city side to, uh, to, to work with the applicant on whether, um, you know, we want that or not. I know there has been some talk from the, the Public Works that, um, they, they don't necessarily want a, another splash pad, and so and so that, 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 that may be one of those things, if the applicant proposes a splash pad, that that's a private splash pad, so they could still need, need kind of this checkbox, but um, it would give Dawn the opportunity to, to either accept it in the public realm or, um, or to have it within the private realm. Um, uh, barbecues have to include space for seating, pocket parks. What's nice about the pocket parks and the common and courtyards is that those are.
What is qualify, what qualifies as a splash pad?
Um, well, I am not 100% sure. That might be something that's under the IPEMA. Um, but, you know, I could tell you, I, I could see a splash pad and tell you it's a splash pad, but the exact definition, um, I'm not 100% sure. I don't know if Dawn has a, wants to add to that.
Dawn, do you want to add to that?
Um, I mean, is he on? There, one second. Oh, there's Dawn, okay.
It's a spray park different than a splash pad?
I think, uh, when they're talking about splash pads, they're talking about a combination of um, some type of water feature that sprays water, that has playground equipment in it. Um, I think that's the difference between, say, a spray pad, a spray park, which is like the, those areas that just have the the sprays that, that come up and, you know, and go through a different, um, uh, zones. Um, so that's the best I can tell you right now, is that a splash pad would include water, and we're talking about pumping water and, uh, equipment within the splash pad.
Okay, so a spray park would be, I mean, if there was like a, a bunch of water just shooting out of the ground like they have in Salt Lake City, that might be a spray park?
Well, I've seen some that actually have water come up in different locations at different times. You've seen those. I think you've probably seen them.
Yeah.
And, and they, and they have, they're, they're pretty fun. I think, um, actually, um, Highland has one over the, their, at their.
Dawn, is that similar to the one at the river bottom by like the Happy Sumo? Is that, is that an example of a timed? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, just making sure I'm following.
That's why they're, they're grouping it in as a water feature, because it's like
Yes.
pretty, but you can also run through it.
Yes.
Okay, so Morgan, can you explain to me, just, I'm sorry, I missed kind of what you were saying as far as there, we were worried about an additional splash pad?
Yeah, so in, um, in working with, uh, with the Public Works Department, um, there, just as we've gone through this process, and you know, knowing from our, our, our first splash pad, we, we do love our splash pad, but it's, it does take a lot of, uh, a, a lot of, um, personnel, and it, it, there's a lot of cost to, to the city. And so, um, if, uh, talking with them, it sounds like if there was a splash pad or a spray park, like a like we have at the Vineyard Grove Park, that that would be within the, the private realm and not necessarily in the public realm, so that the city would have to take care of it. And so, um, because it would be a public space, that would, the engineer would be able to, um, you know, or the Public Works Director, Director could work with the developer on that. Um, so that, that, that was sort of my comment on that. I know that's been kind of a, one of those, those, uh, those areas, um, that of concern. Um, but we, we definitely want to make sure that whatever is put in, we're able to, to maintain and have the personnel for it.
You can see Bronson's answering some of the questions in the chat.
And then.
Okay, so as part of this, what you're saying is that community gatherings will be within public works to decide whether it's in the private or public realm?
Well, yeah, part of that we do through the site plan process, and so they, they may, uh, the developer may have, um, amenities that they want to be on their private property, or they may have amenities that they want to be located within the public realm.
Will the public, will that can, will that take, um, sorry. Will that green space or open space be counted within our public space green percentage?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So how, how the, the open space includes, uh, i- any open space in the development, so that, that 20% of, it has to fall within, it has to be allowed, so there, it, it provides the open space types, but then it allows for the amenities to be added to those types. So an open space type would be like the pocket park. It's actually called that as an open space type. A commons or a courtyard is an open, is an open space type, so they would definitely get credit for that. And, um, you know, within those areas, they, they could also amenitize those areas with a, um, you know, with a, with a fountain uh, reflection pool, any, any of those kind of amenities. So some of these amenities can be, um, co- coupled together. Um, but we do have the, the radius, um, that would kind of push the, um, amenities to, to be spread out to some degree as well.
So one of my concerns is, um, and I, I think it'll be easier for me if I, we can ask questions as we go along the slides. Um, just so I don't like forget what's going on, but one of my concerns is before there was the 18-acre park, there was, uh, the same amount of open space, but it was all put into private areas. And so there wouldn't have been a public park where people could come gather, where we could use the space, because it would be private. And I don't think that green space or open space in a city works the same or should be necessarily counted the same if it's changed from a pr- a public to private realm.
Right, so, um, so are you saying like the overall percentage, so there's a 20% requirement? You're saying if it's a private open space, it should be count, counted differently than a, than a public open space?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how we would do it or how it would be done, but I do think that there's a big difference, and I worry that because we don't want to take care of something. And Dawn, you can speak more to this, but I worry because we don't want to take care of something, that it might go to a private area. But that public area is really critical, especially due to the density that's going in this space to make sure that there's public areas that are facilitating a good balance between the density and the open space.
Um, do you want me, Julie, to, to unmute like Pete and Nate and Bronson, so that, because they, they, they probably could provide some, um, they probably could add some to this conversation?
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and Pete and Nate and Bronson, feel free to raise your hands as well, so I can call on you. Like, if, if you're just sitting there muted and you want to say something.
Pete raises his hand.
Sorry, because my screen shared, it's, it's, it's taken away a lot of my controls, so I'm just kind of, I have to find.
Raise your hand, guys. Just go click on Participants at the bottom, and then you'll see the, on the right, the raise hand button.
But just.
Hello, am I unmuted yet?
Yeah, you're unmuted, Nate.
Oh, there we go.
Every time I raise my hand, uh, Chris makes fun of me because I stabbed myself in the hand. I'm kicking and had to have surgery on, so. I'll, I'll, I'll raise the virtual hand in the chat room instead.
I, I wouldn't be making fun if this wasn't the second time.
Yeah. That's fair, that's fair. So I think as far as amenities go, I mean, what, what we've talked about from the beginning is making sure that we have the right balance between, um, public open space and private open space, and I, and I think the mayor's point is a good point, which is typically, the theory is as you move towards a higher-density development where you have less private open space, in other words, you don't have a backyard, or your backyard's not as big as a larger lot, then, then the trade-off is you're, you want to consolidate some of that into more public-use open space, whether that's community-wide public use, or whether that's development-wide public use. Or in some cases, if you have like just a traditional townhome development, um, you know, you'll see that those townhomes have you know, you'll see that those townhomes have that open space requirement just in their development. So that you'll it'll say you need to have twenty percent open space and they'll put in a pocket park that's just for that development. And the idea again is to make sure that there is a place for those people that are giving up the private open space in in that kind of a housing product, to have a place to recreate with, you know, quote unquote, public open space, whether the public is owned by the public in a city, a municipal setting, or whether it's or it's just a public space, meaning that it's a community area or, you know, owned by the HOA, there is a place for that recreation to occur. And I think as you look at our map, one of the things that we have done is distribute that open space that will be owned by the public in a better way than it was before. And so, you know, it's kind of staged as you go through the the project. We have a really usable and well programmed Lake Promenade on the south end. We have the second promenade, what we call the North Promenade, kind of midway through the project and then Geneva Park on the north end. And so I I don't, we don't really have a concern that we're going to run out of areas for public recreation, because in in the middle of all these as well, you're going to have plaza areas and pocket parks and recreational amenities, so that all of the, and that that was kind of the idea of going through that amenity list is to make sure that within walking distance of each of these, there's a certain number of recreational amenities, whether they're owned by the public or owned by the HOA. Those people living there have the opportunity. And then there's a a separate, I think, a separate concern, which is if you look at the eighteen acre park, that wasn't just for the residents of that particular neighborhood. That was more community wide or city wide. And I think we have that same philosophy going on here with the Lake Promenade, where you've got everything from the Transit Plaza on the east end, all the way to the Beachfront Park on the west end. You've got the North Promenade and then obviously Geneva Park. So I I think, I really feel like with the changes that we made to the residential amenities section, you're going to have a great diversity between public and private open space, but you're also going to have a really good diversity between public and private open space uses, so that you make sure that the the internal residents have adequate access to recreation and there that that trade off for public, quote unquote, public open space is adequate for the the housing product that they're living in. But then you also have kind of larger scale, community wide recreational facilities in the more consolidated green spaces like, you know, kind of more akin to that eighteen acre park that was in Waters Edge.
Yeah, and I do love the trade offs. I think it's important for the people that are living there to have the smaller areas to recreate in. My guess, my concern is what it really is that I'm worried about is how do we decide those and if it's going through Public Works, and I love you Public Works, but sometimes we think about spending money differently than each other and the vision is different for me. And I guess the the point I was making relative to the eighteen acre park is that it didn't start out as an eighteen acre park. It started out as pocket parks all over the place to allow people within the region or in that Waters Edge area to have places to recreate. And so I like that it's it's separated here differently. I'm just concerned if all of a sudden there's a really cool idea that could go to the public and then it doesn't go to the public because we're worried about maintaining it.
It's a great concern and I I think that's one of the reasons why in the plan, like we were just talking about, you have both, we have these big consolidation of green spaces and then we're going to have all these recreation areas interspersed between. But I think the other thing to remember is that and these site plans are going to go to planning commission. And so I think there will be a really good opportunity for the city to to make that internal decision within the city and and determine do, you know, make that cost benefit analysis from a both with Public Works input and Planning Commission's input and city staff's input. And, you know, I I think there's an adequate review process there where I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you'll have any one department unilaterally making that decision.
Morgan, is that how the code reads with that stipulation or is that, is it going to be, is that approval ability able to happen through Public Works and and in Public Works, you feel free to comment on this, Dawn, or whoever else is here from Public Works as well. I just, it's one of the concerns that I have for our for our public spaces.
Mayor, um, I just know that we will do whatever the city wants us to do. My biggest concern is that we approve something and we don't have it funded. So the lake acre park turned into Grove Park with a splash pad. And last year, we blew through our overtime budget in three months.
Yeah.
Because we were having to spend nine to ten hours a day, five, seven days a week maintaining the splash pad.
Yeah, because we opened up the additional day for the splash pad, I remember.
Yeah, so so that's my concern is if we're going to do this, then let's adequately fund it and we'd be glad to take care of it. It's just that when we get put in a situation where we're expected to maintain it, but we don't have the manpower or the funding to do it.
Dawn, if somebody that wasn't as agreeable and willing to be collaborative in our Public Works was here versus you, would that code allow them to make decisions that weren't collaborative with the city?
I I think that's the one thing, if if this is actually going through the planning commission and through a a process where someone else is reviewing it besides just the Public Works Director or just the city engineer, that that gives you an extra layer of of you know, help to make sure that that doesn't happen. And and I think, I think there isn't a Public Works Director out there that wouldn't be glad to have this type of opportunity as long as it's funded. So I think that's the element we need to make sure happens.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think being fiscally conservative, wise, knowing where our budget sits is always important. I just want to make sure that we are not adding something to the code that if we don't have the people that we're currently working with now, that whoever is here in the future, because it's a long term project, that the hands wouldn't be tied for the people that are serving on the city council. I think it, or the or the planning commission, whatever other body is there. I just want to make sure that the wording reflects that.
So Julie, this is Morgan. The the code does have the the process outlined for it, so you would go through the site plan process. And it it would, just like a a building, would need to go to the planning commission, the park space would as well. And the, you know, we did work a lot of this out when the developer came in for the R D A agreement, that the promenade and and other open spaces would go through a a very public vetting process. And so we had the charrette and then we had a presentation on 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 those open spaces and that was more of the higher level concept ideas. And my understanding is that the developer is now working on fine tuning those open spaces. And so what we need to do is now have us work closely with the Public Works Department to ensure that any amenities that are added to those open spaces can can be maintained. It's one thing just to design a great park, but we need to have a plan to to maintain those things.
So Morgan, I'm going to ask maybe in a different way, if the planning commission voted something in and saw something that was good and the staff came back and it was fundable, but the public Public Works person that's working ten years from now decided they didn't want to maintain it, does the code give them the ability to decide that it's private versus public?
No, no, I mean, what, once something is is public, inter- so what what we need to look at, and so to answer your question, is the code right now shows us what is going to be public open space as far as the promenade, the North Promenade and and Geneva Park. We know that those are public open spaces.
But what about an amenity, okay?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So if if an amenity is added to one of the those open spaces, so what I would look at, I would look at those as 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 just like areas and then if amenities are added to those areas, then they become public. In unless the developer builds another park and then and then the the city accepts it. But if amenities are added to those areas, then one hundred percent it's going to be a public amenity. And that's where through the site plan process, so what we do in the site plan process is planning and engineer and other groups at the city review it and work with the developer on details. And then it goes to the planning commission in an approval process. And so what we need to do is make sure before it goes to the planning commission that the Public Works, city engineer and planning director, that we're all on the on kind of the the same page as far as what amenities are going to go in there. Because what, once it gets approved and built in public space, then it is the the responsibility of the city to take care of it. Unless we have some sort of maintenance agreement with with the developer, but if not, if it's in public right away and we've accepted it in the public right away, then it's it's going to be the responsibility of the city.
Chris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I mean, Anthony, our planning commission chairman, had a great comment in the chat in terms of, you know, if there was something that was going to be requested through the site plan process that the city take over, that there also be included a fiscal impact study as a part of that. I mean, I I don't think that that's a good idea. I think if if there's something at that level, there should be some sort of a fiscal impact study to see what the overall ongoing cost would be. The other question I had would be, so are we essentially giving authority to the planning commission to create a budget without having it need to go through a budget process?
Well, this is Nate here, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I think we're talking about two separate things here. One is and and help me understand if if I'm if I'm hearing everybody correctly here, but I think what we're saying is we want to make sure that all the the really nice amenities that get built in these public spaces and these main public spaces, meaning the promenade, Geneva Park, the Northern Promenade and Down By The Lake, that those are all public open spaces. And I think the way the code's written now is the process doesn't just go to planning commission for that. I believe the open space on those parks is a very collaborative process that's spelled out. And I I believe on those larger facility parks, they need to go to planning commission and city council. So that's one. And so then the second component of this is I think the other amenities we're talking, which is this section, which is the eighth mile and the quarter mile section. The way I believe these work is they'll be, they're planned to be private unless otherwise, unless the city chooses to make them public. Right? Because we don't necessarily care if we're building a little plaza in between buildings. If you guys say, no, we we would rather own and maintain this than having you guys own and maintain this. And I think Julie's question is just, she just wants to make sure that that process isn't some rogue Public Works Director in the future, not Dawn, because Dawn understands and works with everybody there. So I think those are the three questions. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, and mine in specific to that also has to do with not just places for recreation, but connectivity. And so if we wanted to take those on, that is my concern is would a rogue person who doesn't work with us far into the future have the ability to not adhere to those decisions?
Well, because I think we have the public, the what the city owns in this, which is those main areas we discussed and trails. And then outside of that, I think everything is currently planned to be private unless through the site plan approval process, you know, we come in and you say, oh, no, we'd rather, you know, that's a really nice pocket park or playground or whatever that facility is and and the city says, we would rather own and maintain that. I think we just need to think through, I think what you're asking me is, what does that process look like? Is and and Chris is saying, well, is that something that should just be left up to planning commission or is there a way in here to say, the site plan process goes just through planning commission unless there's a public, private situation and then that type of situation needs to go through planning commission and city council. Because to me, it seems like if we're doing something that's large enough, I mean, I don't, we don't want to overburden everybody with bringing in normal plats and change your whole site plan process, but I think a site plan that comes in that has things that were dedicating to the city, or if we bring in a site plan that the planning commission says, no, we think this should be public, we're going to send this to city council as well, maybe that's the process that that looks like. But then for normal plats that come in that planning commission looks at and says, no, we don't think any, all this should be private, that that's just the normal site plan. Is that something that could possibly work?
Could I, could I, could I ask just for one more thing that we end up doing here? One of the things that I think needs to happen is is we get site plans started through the process, if there's a design that's done paralleled with that site plan, so that we have a cost estimate, we have a basic design that could be approved, so that when it gets gets approved, then we're not going back through the process again to try to figure out. You know, I mean, like the eighteen acre park was a perfect example of that. We we approved it before we ever saw the final design. And there was a lot of things that happened on that project that kind of fell through the cracks. I just want to make sure that we design it as we're approving it. We have, we basically get a budget for it. The council approves the budget, if it's going to be public, the planning commission approves the site plan. Staff gets an opportunity to review it and make its recommendation and everything at the end of the day is golden and and then once it gets approved, then it gets built. It doesn't matter who, there won't be any rogue Public Works Director that can defer that.
Morgan and then Chris.
Okay, so and we we could, so first to kind of tackle Dawn's comment. I I agree with Dawn, the an easy way to do that is to simply put it as a condition under the planning commission approval that the final construction drawings will be approved by the 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 city engineer and Public Works Director. And within within compliance of the site plan. So typically, site plan, you're not getting into the construction drawing level and you really shouldn't. It's more conceptual, you get a layout, you get elevations and that kind of stuff. So for a park, it would be like the types of equipment, the amenities that are going to be there, landscaping. And then if we had simply just a condition of the approval would point to getting a permit or get getting approval from the city engineer and Public Works Director, then that would trigger the process. The other way is you could add that actually in the code, so it's specified following the planning commission approval, final construction drawings shall be approved by the by by the city engineer and Public Works Director. I think that's that's a pretty easy add. So you could either do it as a condition, or if you want to just ensure it happens, you would put it in the process section. Because in the process section of the code, at the very bottom of the code, it actually specifies the process that you need to go through. And the planning commission is is the the body that approves everything except for development agreements. So if you wanted to to do what Dawn says, you could either do it as a condition of the approval or you could add it to that section of the code, which is pretty easy. The other thing to kind of Nate's point, if there was a threshold that you wanted to 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 look at where something would then jump to a city council level because of of taking on the maintenance of a public facility or something like that, then we could, we could put that in there as well. And so I wouldn't necessarily want it to be the city council is approving site plans, but it could simply be the city camp council makes the the decision whether or not to take on the responsibility of a pub- of a public improvement. So so you could still have the planning commission approve the site plan, the the aesthetics, the layout, the landscaping. But then the city council could say, okay, well, if you're adding a splash pad to the promenade, you know, we are going to give the okay on that or not. And so if there's a fiscal impact, then the city council can make the approval on the fiscal impact and then the planning commission can make the approval on the actual like site layout design of that. Of the of the public improvement.
Okay, great. Chris?
Ditto what Morgan just said.
Okay. My next question is on the percentage then of the twenty five or the twenty percent, what percentage of that is public? Just meaning what percentage of it are we maintaining? Just meaning what percentage of it are we maintaining?
So right now it's, it's within the public right of way that's shown on the map. So let me jump back to that. So if you can, hopefully you can see the screen. So the vineyard downtown district map. Right now it'd be Geneva Park, the north promenade and the lake promenade. And right now, and you know, and, and this is where we, I, I wasn't necessarily saying we need to work this out tonight, but we could work this out after. The roads that are going to be public. So anything that, that is public would, would fall under the city, but the, the public open space would be the lake promenade, the north promenade and, uh, the, the Geneva Park area.
Yeah. And what percentage of the open space is that?
We would have to calculate that real quick. So we have, let's see, 23. Pull my calendar, or my calculator. See the north promenade, I don't know if I, I was to see that. North and south are 21. The lake and the north are 21. So that's going to give us, or they give us 44. So 44 and then whatever percentage that is of 340. That's going to be just over, um, you know, 10%. So that would probably be like 13, 14%. We need to make up the rest, um, within the, the private realm.
What, Morgan, what about the, there's the lakefront open space? Is that not listed as?
No, that's, that's not, um, private development. So that's, um, state land.
That's right.
Yeah, the, the project benefits from it, but they, they can't count.
We're not counting it.
Oh, and they, they can count the trail. The trail itself is a, is a pretty big benefit to the city. So that would be counted.
And how much would that add?
It depends on how big the corridor is. They, um, in talking with them, they've, they, they've explained that they, they could go 20 or even 30 feet and make it a really nice green open space, like an, like an urban corridor. It goes next to the, the train. And I, I don't know if, uh, they, they want to jump in on that, but that, that.
I think Morgan too, you, uh, 340 acres, that would include the lakefront residential piece, which they've already got open space in there. So our total acreage there that we have left that, that we're talking about here is closer to like 280. So that's going to bring that public percentage a lot higher than the 12%.
Yeah, with the. Which area was that? I'm sorry.
The lakefront residential is included in the 340 acres and they already had to have some open space in their communities. You know, they have their clubhouse and all. And so I'm just saying, if you're looking at what we're talking about tonight, the percentages, the public percentage is currently higher than whatever math we just did there. I'm not.
What are the, what are the typical percentages for this type of area? For instance, in Salt Lake, is it near 30% when you increase the density to this?
No, so this is Pete. So 20% is pretty average. When we, when we originally started laying this out, we were kind of shooting for kind of 10% on the, in the big open space areas. And then we'd have 10% kind of scattered throughout in the little pocket park areas. We ended up quite a bit higher on the, you know, on the, the bigger consolidated areas. Which I think is, which I personally think is good, just the way that it lays out with the different, the distribution of the big consolidated areas. And then we'll have, um, you know, obviously other, other areas in that interspersed, which will add up to about another 10%.
So, so Julie, just to, to throw caution to the wind based on what Bronson said about us not being able to do math in a public meeting. But, so if I add up all of the parks, if we add up the park space, just Geneva Park and the promenades, right? That's 44. If you add up all the acreage, not including the seven acres of lakefront open space, you're getting roughly, what's that? 303? Does that sound about right to you, Pete and Nate?
Yeah, that's going to be close. It's going to be somewhere just less than 300, but.
Okay. So e- either way, if you use that 303, which is the numbers that are there in front of us, that's essentially 14 and a half percent. And that's not including any open space in that lakefront residential yet. That open space that was down there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So in, I, it makes sense that the lakefront residential contributes to the area, but just looking at the space as a whole, if you're isolating it to the town center, because we're adding so much density, I just want to make sure that we are bal- balancing out the open space with the additional density that we're including.
And so if, if you take that, if you take the lakefront residential out, Julie, then it's going to be a higher percentage.
What is it? Do you know the numbers? I can't see the little screen, so I'm glad you guys can.
Yeah, I think that was Nate's point, uh, mayor was that.
You're closer to 18% mayor, because you take out the lakefront.
And then, and then we also have all these other amenity requests on top of that. So I, I, I think, you know, the eighth mile and there's a, I don't know.
Why aren't we adding in the additional amenity requests?
Well, no, they, they're in there.
That doesn't go to the 20%. That's just, that's just on top of, so there'll be, there'll have to be at least 20% open space. All of our calculations show that there will be more than 20%. That's just, that's just what's coming over from the current code. This isn't something we're trying to change or.
Oh yeah, no, I know what you're saying. I'm just saying, what I'm saying is this. Why wouldn't we update the code? Like the additional things that you're asking for makes sense because it probably provides a nicer balance. But my thing is, why wouldn't we add that kind of that balance into the code numbers? So that we can make sure that, that better request is,
I think there's just a misunderstanding on the amenity requests, mayor, because the, the amenity requests aren't really us requesting amenities. They're just, they, they were a response to making sure that there was these lists there and some details given for a minimum number, a minimum amount of, of amenities that we would provide for the residents within the community. So when we say we expanded the list of amen, of potential amenities, all, all that, that, that isn't us saying we want to do something less than or different than what was there before. It was just us adding to the list of potential things that we could put in those one eighth and one quarter mile distances that we said, we said we would commit to everybody having access to amenities within those areas.
Okay, Morgan, when we were reviewing this code, did we compare the percentage of other like districts like Salt Lake City? Do you know the?
We didn't. So if I could just add, in, in our city, the RMU, which would be our, our closest built out district, it has, has a 10% requirement. And so just with the, the lake promenade, north promenade, Geneva Park, you're at, um, essentially 13%. And then you add the trail corridor that bumps you up, uh, probably a 14%. And then the lakefront residential bumps you up again from what they, they've already added. And, um, and we do have the walkway plan that shows the open spaces between the blocks. That's more of an urban style open space, but that, that was, um, you know, it seemed like something that, that would fit in really well with, with here, with the, the town center. So, um, from an open space standpoint, at least compared to the RMU, it's, it's going to be, uh, it's quite a bit more. Uh, but no, we, we don't have like a, um, you know, I, I, I didn't do like an analysis of the Salt Lake, Salt Lake City developments or, for others.
Do you think it'd be pretty easy to look it up while we're sitting here? I mean, I can look it up, but I might not actually find the right place.
Um, just how my system is set up right now, facilitating meetings can be kind of hard for me. I'm, I'm, I don't know Pam, if you want to look at, um, do you have a specific development? Are you thinking like the gateway? City Creek areas? Is that, when you say Salt Lake, are you talking about their downtown mixed use development?
I guess in relation to this amount of land, what would fit within here? If, is, if that's all of Salt Lake, let's just look up the land. The open space percentage for that, for Salt Lake. Right? Because if all of, so much of Salt Lake can fit in here, you wouldn't just look at gateway. That would be unfair to the development. If we're adding additional density, I, I understand that like 10% is like nice for some areas or 14% feels nice for some areas. But when you're adding in like this much density, I just am looking for some kind of cost. I mean, some kind of compared to comparison.
Pete, so if you, in, in the, um, just looking really quickly on the American Planning Association, if you have an, an urban development, they recommend 10 to 12% public open space.
Okay. Chris, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess, um, I'm a, I'm a little confused, but I think I can clarify it for myself in a sec. So if I take the total acreage here that you're showing Pete and Nate, essentially what you're saying is 20% of that total acreage, I'm not adding in the seven acres of lakefront open space. But 20% of that will be.
Will be open space. Yes.
And then on top, on top of that 20%, are these additional amenities that are within an eighth of a mile or a quarter of a mile like we talked about?
No, so that it's.
No, okay. So you're adding those together?
Yeah. And I think what Morgan was saying was so far without doing any of those, we're already 50% higher than some of the other areas in Vineyard and we're 50% higher than now what we're seeing that the, the planning association recommends for an urban area. So you, without doing any of them, but on top of the open space that you're seeing on the map right now, we'll have additional amenities that will get us to at least 20% total open space.
Okay.
And the, the other thing is, is so Matt just texted me Lambert from DPC. He's the one I've been trying to, he's available, but in another meeting. And he said, uh, open space in regular urban codes is maxed out at 15 to 20%. And all the urban codes that they do have 15 to 20% total open space. And so where, where this code started at 20, that's what, that's what we have. And then I think two other questions I had. One is, so there will be amenities on top of, I mean, on top of the 20% because some of those amenities are actual physical amenities that you build, right? Like a clubhouse and a pool, a fitness center. Those are things that although, you know, that whatever ground they're sitting on is counted towards open space ground. You have an additional amenity on top of, of the minimum 20% that the code already has. Does that make sense? So I mean, we're providing other additional amenities, not just 20% open space that the code currently has. And then the question is, is when we're talking about granting additional density, Julie, can you, can you walk me through the, the granting additional density question here, statement that you made?
Sure. I, I don't, I mean, is there more density in this than in the other plan that we just approved?
No, no. So I think that's an important clarification. So.
Just housing differences, like instead.
Housing differences and we're moving the office closer to the train station. So we're not coming in saying we want additional rooftops than the last plan had. And I think that's a very important distinction. For everybody, for the public and, and for everybody listening tonight, we're not coming in asking for additional rooftops. We're just shifting the way that the last plan, where the last plan had those, um, different uses to more of a walkable community that puts the commercial users closer to the train station than the last plan had.
Okay. Cause I felt like it was communicated differently to me. Cause I did feel that that's what we were doing initially when we put housing in the business area. And it was important to do that because it created a safer, more walkable environment. But from my, from what I understood in prior conversations, whereas people were saying there would be more density and I didn't compare the numbers. I can pull it up, but if that's the case, um, then that's, that's better for me.
Yeah, no, and we, and we transferred, so remember we went from the, the 500,000 square feet of non-residential uses in that bottom area to a million square feet, which, which is, you know, and we've talked this before, but City Creek Center, for example, the total square footage is 750,000. So what we're saying is we're going to build, you know, the, the non-commercial use, non-residential uses that will be down in that area now are way substantially more than they were before, a lot higher.
Okay. Morgan, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was one of the points that I wanted to make just about the residential density. We're not, the, the code never, um, and even the, the original code never provided a, an overall project density cap. And so the numbers that we've been hearing from the developers, it, that's, that's not like a, a number that is, that needs to be approved by the city as far as 52 to 6,000, uh, 5,200 to 6,000 residential units. Now, um, this overall code change does loosen up where, um, residential units can, can be located. But there's, um, there's never been a, uh, like a, a, a overall cap. There was a, a district cap, which was 40 units per acre in like right in the core. And that, that's, that's pretty substantial. If you look at the vine, they're about 20. So that's like double the vine. But I, yeah, I was just going to kind of point that out. Like it's not necessarily a conversation of the overall density. It, it would be, is far as the reallocation of where, you know, where you could distribute those, those, those units.
Right. And there wasn't necessarily a density cap because in some areas, there's no max on building height and stuff like that.
Right.
With the design that we have though, it feels like there could be a denser plan. Is that not accurate?
Yeah, there's, there's more opportunities to, to, to build residential, um, now than there was in, in the last plan. Cause you do have the, the northern district.
But in exchange for that, we doubled the amount of non-residential required use in the whole community. So you went from for sure getting 500,000 square feet of non-residential use to getting for sure a million square feet of non-residential use.
Yeah, which I understood. I just, I guess what I was saying is I want to make sure there's a balance of open space. Cause it's a dense project. And I think it's well placed. It's in the area it should be. I just want to make sure that we have the right open space. And I, I know the APA planning, APA, yeah, the APA planning guide. That's a great guide. I don't know for what amount of land they're talking about, if it's a small TOD or a large site like this. I don't, I don't exactly know, but I think it would be great to get those numbers from Pam that you're looking up. But other than that, that's my question about this for now. So we can move on unless somebody else had another comment.
Just, just to clarify it, they do get to count the open space in the lakefront residential. I mean, we're kind of glossing over that, but my, my interpretation of the code is they get to count that open space there too, just so we're all on the same.
Oh yeah, I, I think that's true. It's just as we look at this play, this change, we can make sure that we alter things to make sure that it's overall cohesive plan as things are altering. And that's, once we change this, this is our opportunity to make sure that it goes in right. This is the opportunity.
Yeah, Chris, you're, you're right. And I, I apologize. I thought you were, the first time you said that, you're talking about the lakeside, the actual like Utah State. Lake areas, so.
Oh, and not the lakefront.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I, which I also think is important. I know we're not counting that and getting credit for that in the 20% or any of these additional amenities. But I think, I mean, we, we do have a giant lake here that we're all working really hard to create an, an additional amenity on top of all this. And I think, I think we're all, we're all on the same page of this place has to have a lot of amenities and, and be, which is, which is why we're taking the promenade from, you know, the base level of what the vision was before to something entirely different and entirely better. And that's why we're planning on putting that in right away and get, get working with all of you guys on planning that. Because we feel like the lake and the promenade at the level that we're planning on building them at is going to really set the tone and create a magnet for this whole space.
Dawn, did you have something additional about the trail on top of the CWP water pipe easement?
Well, uh, it was just that, um, Bronson was saying that, that we, we weren't counting that 35 foot wide trail that along the railroad track. And I just said that, that was granted, uh, and a granted easement to CWP for the water line. And so I don't think we can count that as open space.
Although we're gonna, there's a trail being built on it though, that everybody's, public's going to use, right?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, but I'm just saying it's, it's going to be hard to count it as open space when, when clearly it's, I mean, you can't use it for anything else. when, when clearly it's, I mean, you can't use it for anything else. It's a grand easement to.
But you couldn't use the trail for any, you couldn't use any trail for anything else, though.
Uh, uh, yeah. I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't think getting to the twenty percent, we're gonna have heartburn over. But, uh, yeah.
I'm, uh, again, anyway.
Um, I'm happy to, to continue. That was, that was an exciting slide. Like I'll, I'll jump down this next one. This is the fourth mile radius. Um, I won't go through every one of these. I think you guys should have, uh, or had the opportunity to review these. Uh, but these are, um, some of the larger items like the fitness center, um, swimming pool, hot tub, um, dog parks. Uh, is there any discussion on the, um, on, on this section, fourth mile radius?
The only, the only question I had was on these, could it, um, could any of these be double counted on the promenade? Does that make sense what I'm asking Pete and Nate? So if something was put on the promenade, would you also be able to count that?
Yes.
Yeah, the code, the code is written for private and public open spaces.
As an ability to, I mean, for example, in the, in the existing code, there was an ability to reduce the twenty percent, you know, through amenitizing things. I think this is just another way of incentivizing amenitizing that promenade open space.
But I also think, I also think it's important, and, and Morgan, if you have the, the lines that show the quarter mile and the eighth mile, I think it's helpful to see when we talk about how close these amenities need to be to these residential units. Cuz, cuz I think we lose the scale of when we say the eighth mile, it's not like you can have three amenities along the promenade and that.
Right.
In this whole thing. An eighth mile is like your thumbnail on that, on that sheet. I mean, it's, it's really, an eighth mile, we're gonna have to have a lot of amenities everywhere. And, and we felt like part of that is, it's good for all of us because, you know, uh, uh, to Julie's point earlier, you know, I think creating a place that has the most amenities for everybody and not just a couple buildings here or there in the community, I think is better off for the community as a whole. So there definitely will be private amenities that only the residents can use, you know, like if you have a clubhouse or a, and a pool, for example, that's probably not something that's just open to everybody. But I think as, as many of these other amenities, and, and you guys will have the decision and choice. You, I mean, you'll be able to look at it and say, no, we don't, we don't want that in here, you know, we think that's a good. It's not like we can just arbitrarily build things in the promenade and count things. These are definitely things we're gonna have to work through. And you guys will obviously have the final say. And if, you know, there's a playground that's an eighth mile away and you say, no, we don't want that in here, you build that somewhere else, you know, we can, we can do that too. But it just, so at the end of the day, it's still, you guys still have to approve the things going in the promenade and make the decision whether or not those are things you think are good for the public overall. And not just for this, for the people in that community and those residents.
And can you see this screen? Yeah, so that, that gives you a perspective of what those great, the bubbles will look like.
Great. And then just one more clarification. So when it says like, um, fitness center, obviously if, if a private gym came in on their own that was a commercial one, we wouldn't be counting that, correct?
No, unless we bought passes for all of our residents. Because remember, we said not only did it have to be within that distance, but they had to have access to it.
Okay.
And then there was a provision at, that additional amenities be added to the list with the approval of the city planner and planning commission. Maybe that's, maybe we should just put planning commission, take out city planner. I, I think that's how it was supposed to be. At the site plan review. And so that, that provides the planning commission. So if they wanna say, well, this is different, but also a great amenity, then the planning commission can prove that. Okay, are we all good with amenities? So we'll jump, jump into the parking study. Okay, so the, how the.
Uh, Morgan, sorry, Morgan, I was trying to unmute myself real quick, John, here. With the, is there a dollar, yeah, back on the, the quarter mile, um, is there a dollar figure associated with each of these? Or is there not a, there's not a dollar figure? Okay, just checking.
That's why we added some more details to make sure they're, um, you know, uh, more, more quality. But they're, no, no dollar figure. Uh, so for the parking study, um, the, how the code is being proposed is that, um, there's different benchmarks that allows either the developer or the city to request a parking study at the developer's cost, um, at five hundred units, fifteen hundred units and three thousand units. Uh, the purpose of this study would be to see if table, if the numeric values listed at eight point one three, that's the table with, with like how many stalls per use required, um, are sufficient. And it allows us to either lower, increase, or keep the numbers the same. And so that's, that, that's how it's been written. I think that addresses the concerns that were brought up last time. It can be decreased or increased. Um, and it, it would be at the request of the developer of the city. So if we get to five hundred units and the parking looks amazing, then, uh, if it works, working well, then we don't need to go through the cost of doing the parking study. But the city can, this gives authority, we can request a, uh, a study. And then we added the student housing. Um, so this is point eight, um, stalls. And that's the occupant per unit. And there is no cap on that one.
So Pete, Pete and Nate, knowing that Uvu doesn't really have their own student housing, how would you determine if the project is student housing?
Well, so we would design the project specifically to be a student housing project. And it, it, when you start, when you start from scratch with a student housing project, they're, they're just built differently. Um, and so if we were doing student housing, it would be student housing specific. And, and, uh, you know, our plan is when we have these other parking ratios, they, the parking will be assigned and enforced so that it will eliminate the ability to have a de facto student housing project, um, where that's happening other places. So the, so our idea is, I mean, we, I, we think that student housing could be a really cool element for the energy of the downtown area. And if Uvu gets going on their campus across the railroad tracks uh, and or expands where they are in this, this area becomes a really attractive area for student housing, we would bring in a student housing specific project to the city for review.
Okay.
Um, Pete, uh, follow, follow up to Chris. Is the point eight occupant per unit, is that more or less than the average property? It feels like, is, is that more? Yeah, so, so the difference is that, um, that one doesn't have a cap. So the other parking one have a cap of three units plus a quarter, uh, stall for guest parking. And this is recognizing the fact that in a lot of cases in student housing, you're gonna have more than two residents, uh, per unit. Okay, so this is anticipating more parking need than less in, in our normal resident. Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that cuz obviously student housing and, and students in general has been a parking. Right. Issue, and so I just, okay. And that's not to say that there won't be, uh, maybe a student who rents an apartment down here by themselves and lives in an apartment. It's, it's more to say that we think that through the parking, um, allocation and enforcement that we'll have, will eliminate the, the, um, you know, kind of quasi-student housing that's happening other places. And when we do an actual student housing, uh, development, it'll be with this additional parking to make sure that we have the parking that anticipates multiple students living in one unit.
Pete, but Chris again, just, so, just trying to think through, I, I get you'll bring it to the city at that point in time. But just thinking ahead, ahead of the, the curve right now, how do we, one of the issues is subleasing, right, that we see? So, I, I mean, how would we foresee, like, are you guys gonna provide us and say, hey, we're gonna rent this on a per-bed basis? And we'll strip this amount per room? Is that what you're foreseeing?
Yeah, so, so student housing is a very different animal. I mean, the, the, the rooms are designed entirely different. And so, and that's been the problem historically with the towns, the other townhomes in the, in the community now that Vineyard has is, they weren't designed as student housing, but they're being used as student housing. And the big difference, I think the grandest difference, it's that this project's gonna have versus that, it's gonna have common ownership. So even if we, even if we, you know, one of the concerns is, well, what if you guys sell land to a different developer? Well, if we sell land to a different developer, you know, a six, seven-story, uh, condo project is entirely different than, you know, the, the way the townhomes have been platted and built historically in the city. And the way they're managed is entirely different. And so at the end of the day, it's really the expectations you set in your contracts with your tenants that, you know, we're leasing this, this unit to you, you can have, you know, however many people live in that unit with you, you can't sublease it. There's, there's a lot more restrictions you can put on and a professional manager will monitor that and enforce that. And that's where in the other areas in the city where we're seeing this, you've got individual owners who are doing different things. And there's, you know, there's, there's no common management, which is, which is causing a lot of the issues that we're seeing.
Yeah, I, I, I'm actually excited for this type of unit, honestly, cuz the hope would be that, you know, the students would migrate from where they're currently at, which was hoped to be more of a family residential type unit to a unit like this. I just, Morgan, is there teeth in the code where that requirement saying if they did sell off the land, that developer would have to come in to us and is it on an annual basis? They provide us with something showing that they're still leasing it on a per, per bedroom basis to verify parking still sufficient? Or is it just one and done?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not, we don't have it written in the code like that, so we don't have, um, really the code to provide us, um, that authority. And I was just kind of running through the, the code right now, the, the allowable uses. And I think just kind of just back up a little bit on the student housing. That may be a use that we actually have called out as a use in the table. Because right now it's not. And so it, it's basically, it kind of falls under the multifamily category. So I would recommend, um, if that's. Yeah, we, we add it as a, as a conditional. That, that, yeah, that's a use that's gonna have more impact. And so it's conditional in, in all the, those, those five residential districts.
And you could still have it point to this section for parking requirements.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
That way you're not debating parking requirements at that point, but at least then it would give planning commission and such a little more teeth to be able to say, okay, this is what you need to provide us with.
Yeah, and what, what, what I like about that is we can also look at the bedroom layouts. If it's a conditional use, a site plan, um, you, you're not given as much, um, authority over it. And I, I don't, I'm not a big fan of making everything conditional use permits. But in this case, I, I think it provides us the ability to then say, okay, provide us a room layout. And then they would actually get like an occupant, occupancy allowance. So you could approve that as a number as.
Yeah, that, that would, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable.
Okay. I can add that as.
Ryan Hill's jumping in, but just to add a little bit to the conversation, I think everybody's been spot on in the conversation about the occupants, uh, the student occupants per unit. We did actually run that in our counts. We made some, some initial guesses on, on how many students we might. But to that point, wanted to talk about a couple of additional locations as well. I think there was a question from the city council last time, just to give a little bit of feedback on some of the other areas around the country where, where some backup studies have been created. Just to be clear, there's not many places that have done a backup study to go and check and see how the parking rates have related. And likewise, you know, when the rates have been decided at the different units. So we, we try and use IT as a base for the example of what we're looking at. At a Ranco station in Portland, Oregon, the vehicle trip generation rate was about forty-two point eight percent of the IT rate. So meaning IT comes out and they give guidelines that, from national studies from around the country. When you look at a, a mixed-use TOD like a Ranco station, they only were generating forty-three percent of what IT said they would be generating. But again, IT, as Reed explained last week, they look at everything as if it's a standalone location. If you look at an office building, they look purely at an office building, then they look at the retail, and then they look at the housing. And they add all three of those up rather than looking at the synergy between them. On the parking demand rate, they were forty-two percent of what the IT guidelines are. Let's see, I do have a little more information. There's a TOD in Dallas, Texas. It's called Mockingbird Station. Mockingbird Station is about four miles north of the Dallas Central Business District. They're right along the, the Dart, the Dallas area rapid transit line. And it's, uh, served by both the red and the blue lines. It's also a major bus transfer center, so they've got a lot of people coming in and they're transferring around, moving about the place. But this, this location is interesting because Mockingbird is more of a, uh, it's a TOD in an auto-dominated area. Uh, or district of the country. When you look at Mockingbird Station where it exists, because it's auto-dominated in this area, there's ninety-five percent of the commuters will actually use their personal vehicles to commute with. That's why if a, if a TOD works here at Mockingbird Station, it's gonna work anywhere. Long story short, there are a couple of, uh, graphics that I would point to. I apologize. I know you don't have them. But I'm just gonna run down a little bit of the Mockingbird Station so you kind of get an idea of what it looks like. They, uh, they have commercial, they have retail, uh, strip centers, they have shopping centers, they have office buildings. Residential, they have an eight-story, two-hundred-and-eleven-unit, um, apartment complex. The peak parking occupancy rate at some of these, the mixed-use parking was about seventy-seven percent. The retail parking was about sixty-five percent. The, and, and this is occupancy based on what was built. The office parking was at seventy-one percent and the residential parking was at sixty-one percent. So really, we are, we are way over parking a lot in the various different TODs, even this auto-dominated TOD. When it comes down to it and you add up the supply of parking, supply, IT guidelines would, would calculate about one thousand seven hundred and four parking stalls for that project for Mockingbird. The Mockingbird TOD, their guidelines were to come up with one thousand four hundred and sixty-three stalls. In the after study, when it was completed, they looked at what the peak period demand was, and it was eight hundred and eleven parking stalls. So quite a bit lower. In the same study, there were, there were seven TOD sites, um, transit-oriented development and one TAD site, which is a transit-adjacent development. When you take all of those and you aggregate the data, their average parking demand as a percent of the IT parking guidelines, they were actually only using about forty-eight percent of their parking. That being said, if, if I run just a standard IT parking count on, uh, on this site itself, we come up with about, I think it was just a little bit over twelve thousand stalls. Let me get to the right screen here. It's twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-five stalls. If we look at only utilizing forty-seven percent of that parking, and again, these are the IT numbers. Forty-seven percent would be about six thousand parking stalls, six thousand and eight exactly. Our counts for this area, we're looking at quoting in eleven thousand and eighty-four stalls. We feel like we're, we're pretty much over parked, but, and we wanna have that, that check to go back and look at. So I appreciate the guidelines, looking at, you know, the five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred, you know, whatever the guidelines tend to be.
Well, Ryan, do you wanna do a screen share? I, I, at least I'm not, I don't have it up. Are, are you presenting something right now?
No, I'm just going through, looking at some rates out of the study. So I'm, I'm pretty much done at that point. But I think we have good mechanisms in place. I think the parking is gonna be more than adequate for what we're looking at. And, uh, we may even wanna look at, uh, in the future, we can come back and look at it and say, you know what, we nailed the parking and we can even lower the parking from this point. And I think that's probably the direction we'll end up. But I like where we're headed right now. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, um, I can, I can continue on this. So I've, um, last is, um, our conditions. Um, or like the proposed motion from staff, it's to approve the town center. And then we added one item. It wouldn't be a code change, but it was just a, uh, something that was added as a recommendation of a condition from the planning commission. But it was to have the developer work with city staff to define allowable tree types and plantings permitted in each park strip. I would imagine that would happen during either, um, site plan process or just meeting with them in, um, the construction drawings that they would prepare for each of the street types. And so I, I believe the code gives Don the ability, um, to use this, the, the tree manual at a pretty high level and to make, uh, some determinations on proposed tree types already. So that, I think that's just more of putting them on notice. And I think the applicants, um, you know, very, very willing to, to work with some of those. I think that's just more of putting them on notice and I think the applicants, um, you know, very, very willing to, to work with some of those things. Um, here is a, um, a, uh, a condition that I, I met with Jake today before he, he got on the plane. Um, and it said, essentially it's, uh, to provide ability to utilize the RDA if improvements aren't constructed. And so, um, that kind of gets us away from having to do the bond, but he, he feels that the RDA funds is, that's a stronger mechanism than the bonding anyway. And, um, you know, we're not, we're not too worried about it, but if there are improvements that are not constructed, then, um, this would give us the ability to utilize RDA funds to bring improvements to, to completion.
Yeah, and part of that was just giving, getting a timeline so that we could, what, when we talked about it today was just so we could spend that money instead of paying it down.
Right. And I will drop in, I've been taking some notes, so I'll drop in those other conditions. Um, and we can, we could run through those. I have three, um, just from our conversation now. Sorry, it's kind of hard to wordsmith on the fly, uh, but the others would be the city council will approve all amenities located within the public right-of-way and city-owned land. Um, and so, and the planning commission will approve all elements of site plans for open space areas. So that still allows the planning commission to stay, uh, to kind of keep the authority over the site plan. But essentially what it would do, it was, I, I believe it would go to you first and then you would say, yes, well, we'll take on a splash pad or no, we'll not take on a splash pad, or yes, we'll take on, um, you know, basketball courts and stuff like that. So with, you, so the Lake Promenade, I would imagine it would come in, it would go to you and you would look at all the amenities and then we could go back to the planning commission, the planning commission would approve the actual site plan. Um, student housing will be added as conditional use within all town center districts.
I have a question on that one, Morgan.
Yeah.
So any, so, I mean, all town center districts, wouldn't we want to make sure it's most closely located towards the train station?
Uh, um, yeah, it's, that's, that, that's completely up, up to you guys, um.
Pete and Nate, what, what's your thoughts? Do you really need it in any, any area of the town center or?
I, I don't, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I don't, I don't necessarily foresee needing it not that close to the train station. Um, so if you're more comfortable keeping it in those two districts, the, that's fine. I, I would say alternatively though, that because the parking requirement in those is so high, I don't, you know, I don't feel like it would be a deterrent down, you know, by the lake or to the north if, you know, that's, that's where it made sense, but we could always come in and discuss that as a conditional use in the future if you didn't want to permit it now. So I, I don't think we, I think we'd be open to either one of those scenarios, however you guys, whatever you feel like is best.
So I put in there that the downtown, uh, station district or is it a train station district? Downtown.
It's down, it's DTS, I think, which is down, down.
You created the code, you should know.
Yeah. No, DPZ created the code. I wish he was on tonight. He has ten answers and ten projects for every question.
So Chris, are you
This is, just as Chris, I, I think I'd feel more comfortable and I'm just one person, maybe the other council can speak, but I'd feel more comfortable just seeing as a conditional on those two. And then if something changes, then obviously you could come in and uh, re-looking, re-look at switching it to the other areas.
I totally agree with that, that wording.
Yeah, great. And then, um, the last one, and Don can tell me this, this wording, um, requirement that following planning commission approval, the engineering department shall approve construction drawings for all public infrastructure and open space areas. Don, do you want anything added, changed in that?
Um.
That's the last one.
I think that should probably say public works department because we're going to include parks in that. So.
So, Don, this is Pete, just out of curiosity, is that, is that any different than the process now?
No, it isn't. Uh, normally when we send out a set of plans, they're reviewed by, um, wastewater, water, streets, as well as engineering. So that's what we're doing right now. But.
But wouldn't that apply to both public and private? Don't, wouldn't that have to go through the same process or no?
Uh, based on what Dave, David Church has been telling us is we need to make sure that we're reviewing and approving, uh, private um, roads, just like we are public roads.
Well, and I think if we're counting it towards the overall twenty percent potentially too, it would make sense that we.
That's why, yeah.
So, so Don, just out, out of curiosity, so then like, for example, when the Lox brings in their ten percent open space plan as part of their site plan and they have, you know, a hot lot and a playground and whatever, are you reviewing that?
To tell you the truth, when the locks came in, we weren't. We are now.
Okay.
Because back then, we didn't have the mechanism in place to do that.
And so in, in other words, I mean, this, what we're saying right now to add in as a condition is just the normal process anyway?
Yes. That is, I just think, I think it's nice to have it formalized. So if I'm not here, or if anybody in the, in the public works department isn't here, it's clearly spelled out in the code.
Okay.
Ryan, did you have something?
Start looking button. No, I, I think it was answered. I just wanted to throw out that information the council was looking for. Thank you.
And so Morgan, I guess the, when you say open space areas there, that would include private, correct?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's pretty, uh, pretty general right now. I mean, I could, you know, I, I could
No, I think, I think that catches it, that catches it because we're, we're, if we're including it towards the twenty percent open space criteria, that, that should catch it.
Yeah.
Well, unless I'm missing something, I, I think we're there and I'm happy to make the proposal if, uh, unless someone else really wants to do it.
Um, I had, I had a quick question about the sidewalk sizes. Morgan, we talked about
It's hard to read people in a Zoom meeting. I can't tell where.
Can you hear me, Morgan?
Yeah, I can.
Um, you mentioned we could go over the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm. Let me, uh, here, let me pull up the code. I just bear with me. I'm as fast as Jake. I'm learning. There we go. Can you, could, do you see the code now?
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me get to the street types. Wait, that's. I can go to the top one. I'll go to the top street section. So, um, one thing that's nice about this code is that they did provide a lot of specificity in, um, the dimensions for each of the streets. Um, and so that, that provides some good guidance for us as they're developed. And so Mayor, it sounds like you want to kind of look at each of these for the sidewalk. Um, and Pete and Nate, you guys, you guys can jump in, but I, I can jump, jump through these. Um, so the promenade, and this is showing, and this would be both sides of the promenade, if you remember, the promenade is the street on both sides. This is just showing one side, but it would be modeled, very basically mirrored on the other side. It has a eight-foot sidewalk and then a six-foot urban park strip. So what that does is it essentially makes the sidewalk fourteen feet for sections and then it drops back down to eight feet. Then it goes back up to six feet because there are sections that are either pavers or, or concrete, but then there's the, the trees um, that have like landscape sections throughout. So that, that's the, that's the promenade one. And I, you, you want to talk about this? Or do you want me to just kind of jump through each of these?
Um, yeah, I just had a quick question.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a reason, what, what are our thoughts on going to AP? When I was talking to the public this week about it, there were questions about why not a ten-foot sidewalk or wider sidewalks in these areas?
Um, I'll, I'll let, i-if Nate or Pete, or maybe even Don, wanted, wanted to kind of answer that.
I mean, I, I can take a crack at it. Matt, Matt, I think, and Jeff, uh, explained it best during the last meeting and we were talking about the different sidewalk widths, but really it comes down to different um, sidewalk areas being used for different things. So for example, in this area where you've got, the, these wouldn't be multi-purpose, um, bike and walking trails. You, you've got a dedicated bike lane in the street. And so these are, you know, the eight-foot sidewalk is a lot wider than like a standard four-foot sidewalk, but it's still, it's wide enough where you can comfortably have multiple people walking abreast on the sidewalk with, with comfortable passing room. But it's not a shared, a shared street or a shared multi-use trail situation where you would go to ten feet or larger because you've got that dedicated bike lane in the street where you're hoping bikes are going with that protected, uh, parking in, in front of the bike lane.
And Pete, to add to that, the urban park strip, that, that's a national park strip type that's called out. And what, what Matt explained is that acts as an extension of the sidewalk and it allows for people parking on the street areas where they can cross to get to the sidewalk. And so it allows if someone's walking really slow or, you know, pushing something, they can get over to the side or it allows for just more space for, for crossing and getting past each other.
Yeah, and, and when we talked about this with Jeff and Matt and everybody, um, uh, Jeff couldn't be on tonight because it's Passover, so, uh, he couldn't be on tonight, but he was very adamant about the different uh, sidewalk widths. Um, and a lot of that had to do with walkability and the stuff he's done and all the studies that he's done. You know, he, he says if you get to a ten-foot sidewalk and, you know, I wish he was here to explain this because we get the background and the history and science of evolution, but um, we're not going to get that because it's me, but what, what he did say is that it gets so wide that it's not very, it's not very inviting because you'll never have that many people on there to make a ten-foot sidewalk um, usable and walkable. It's, it'll just be too wide and it's, it discourages walking. So he was very, he's the one that came up with all of these sidewalk widths and was very adamant about them for that purpose. Like I said, I, I don't remember exactly all the reasons, but there was a lot of reasons.
Okay, Morgan, yeah, can you just go through them quick for the public?
Sure. Okay, this is another part of the promenade. It's showing kind of same thing, eight foot with a, um, a six foot, six-foot park strip. Okay, this is a, uh, this is that Main Street and the Vineyard Connector. Sidewalk is eight feet and then it's the same urban park strip at eight feet. So essentially you have eight-foot sidewalk, but then you have sections where it becomes a sixteen-foot sidewalk that drops back down to an eight foot. Uh, okay, this is, uh, North Promenade section, uh, eight foot and then an eight foot. Um, and this is more of just a standard park strip. So it's just a, a straight, um, eight-foot sidewalk, but then in the middle, um, you have, uh, the, the kind of the, that median, um, walking area. And that's not dimension, but it looks like, um, an eight foot on both sides of that. So essentially you have four sidewalks, um, for the North Promenade. And if you want me to stop on any of these, please let me know. This is the, uh, Main Street Central, um, section, and this provides pretty large park strips, um, twenty-eight feet split to fourteen on either side of a six-foot protected bike trail. And then an eight-foot, um, sidewalk on either side. Um, so this is the bikeway street example. So eight-foot sidewalk, six-foot urban, and then the protected bike lane. This is the side street, so one of the smaller streets based off the, a medium density land use type. You have a, a pretty nice ten-foot sidewalk with a, um, a seven-foot park strip and it looks like this type of park strip is more of a tree grate system. Um, and so it, it's really, it's basically a seventeen-foot sidewalk, what, what it looks like unless that ground cover is not concrete and that, that's something else. I don't know if, uh, Peter Nate, if you want to jump in on this one and explain the, the park strip there, but, um.
I don't, I don't know on the park strip, but I do know that this one was, this one is ten feet because it does not have the bike lane in the road. So you can either ride, if you're riding slow, you're riding your bike slow, you ride that on the sidewalk. If you're riding your bike, bike fast, you'll ride it in the lane. You know, if you're a more experienced on your bike, but that's the reason. And, and then this sidewalk is tucked right up against the building. And for the spatial reasons of the ratios, you don't, most people don't feel really comfortable walking right next to the building. So that ten foot in this one is a little bit wider because, um, you're walking um, with, with bikes and having people come in and out of the buildings there.
Okay. Another side street, medium density examples. This provides another one. This is the, the park strip. This looks like more of an urban park strip that was called out in the others. So an eight foot with a seven foot. Uh, side street, this is the low densities to where you'd have your, your townhomes. Eleven-foot park strip, six-foot, um, sidewalk. And I think this falls kind of what Nate was saying, that it looks like there's um, basically like a ten to fifteen-foot setback from the building frontage.
I have a question on this. These areas are, even though they're more residential, there's still going to be a lot of walking that goes on. Did we, do we know why we picked like a, like where, why do we get down to a six foot instead of an eight foot?
Just because it's a less intense area. So even though there's going to be more walking, there's more walking than normal, which is why you go to a six-foot sidewalk from a, your standard four-foot sidewalk. Um, there's not going to be as much walking as there will, will be in the downtown core area, just the number of people that'll be walking around. So this one is really, if I remember right, from Matt, this, this one really is designed for people, two people to be passing each other comfortably on the sidewalk. Um, and then you've got kind of a lower intensity street use. So kind of the travel lanes are, are more shared lanes. So that what, what they, the theory was on these sidewalks, according to Jeff and Matt, was just sizing the sidewalks and the, um, the use of the sidewalks to the intensity of the building types and around it. So you're, you're kind of trying to create the most walkability you can based on who's going to be using those for walking.
Don, what is the width of the sidewalk on Main Street when you're over by the park? Or anybody that knows?
Which, which part? You're talking about the Eighteen Acre Park?
Uh-huh.
Is that, that the trail or the, there's a side, I believe a sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Well, if you're talking about on the park side, that's the, that's the asphalt mixed-use trail, right?
Yes, I think Don's muted.
What is the width on that?
The, the trail is ten feet. Sidewalk on the other side, on the west side road is five feet.
It's five.
Don, do you know what the, the park strip width is there?
It's an eight-foot park strip.
Okay.
Now, why do we want an eight-foot park strip instead of an eight-foot sidewalk?
Well, Matt, Matt and, Matt and Jeff's philosophy is if you oversize the sidewalks, it looks really out of place and you really want to size them right. And you know, this discussion came up last week and we've talked to them both since. And I wish they were here to explain all the reasonings behind this because we're doing a really terrible job at our job here, but, um.
I think you're right. If you oversize them, that's, that's usually true, but in an area like this where there's density, yes, there's less walking than on the other streets, but in so many cities like this, where you have this high mixed-use area, I just feel like eight is pretty standard and it, it like this, where you have this high mixed use area, I just feel like eight is pretty standard and it, it allows, for instance, this is a slower street and so he's anticipating that bikes are going to be moving with the cars.
Yes.
But what I really think is going to happen is that people feel nervous and they'll get up onto the sidewalks and there won't be enough room. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're, we're happy to make them wider. I think the only section here that's six is up in the area that's not very dense. It's not, um, very urban. And so I think that was the logic behind them doing six feet because they wanted to do them smaller. But after the discussion, they said, well, well, you know, standard sidewalks, four feet, so we'll go six feet. That's two people comfortably walking by each other.
Yeah.
And rarely do you have people in an area like that, according to them, that you do, that you are crossing.
Okay.
But.
Would you be okay?
Not really strongly about it. We're happy to change it.
Yeah, I mean, would you guys be okay going up to eight?
Yeah, I think we would. I think, I think Jeff and Matt would just say that's going to look a little goofy and not feel good, but if that's, if, if we disagree with them, we're happy to disagree with them.
So Morgan, you, you'd say do a nine foot park strip and an eight foot sidewalk?
That's what I would say. It's Don.
Bless for Don.
Yeah, are, are.
Are there any benefits to having the 11 foot Don or Morgan or Pete and Nate?
Will allow you to do larger trees.
Yeah, I, I just, I think a six foot sidewalk is actually a pretty big sidewalk. And the, again, these are side streets in the low intensity areas, right? I mean, these aren't, these aren't the main streets and the low intensity areas. These are, these are the side streets, uh, coming off of the main street. So you know, these are going to be neighborhood streets.
Yeah, it looks like the intent is to create more of like a park-like feel in a place that doesn't necessarily have open space, right? So by having bigger green, less cement, the idea is that you have an open space.
Right. I think, I think the bigger green feels better in the, in the more, um, you know, even though we're saying this is lower intensity, I mean, this is still, this is still a lot of people in, in that area. And so I just, I personally don't think a six foot sidewalk is going to get overcrowded or overloaded. And I think the 11 foot park strip is going to just feel really nice.
Um, how big of a tree can you get in a nine comparison to an 11?
Two feet bigger.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just thinking about the bikes and, and really.
Mayor, Mayor, I do remember from the conversation, oh, sorry.
How many people usually go and like sit on the park strip? Or have it feel like, typically I feel like unless they're, I don't know, park strips don't, to me, don't seem to provide a lot of like.
Mayor, I remember from the explanation originally about the park strip. It has to do with safety. It has to do with a buffer between those on a sidewalk pedestrians, kids and the street. And I remember that explanation thinking, oh, I never would have thought of that, but that makes sense that it functions as a barrier and a natural safety gateway between road cars, people walking. That's what I remember. Just, just a heads up on that part.
Oh yeah, that's excellent. And I guess in this area, I mean, a nine to an 11 would probably provide that same buffer. But I'm just trying to weigh out the pros and cons and I don't know. It was just one of the comments that came up and so I realize you're willing to change it to an eight. So maybe just leaving that in the discussion for the ability to change it to an eight or I don't know.
Well, we could change it six to eight. And so it provides some ability when it, when it goes in to get built that we can, we, we can analyze what's being proposed and.
Let's do that, Morgan, so we can move forward.
Okay. So then, but then we probably would do the park strip. So it would say sidewalk six to eight, uh, park strip nine to 11.
Hey.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Let me take a note real quick.
I could see that being a especially interesting concern right now simply because of COVID. So people are more wary to walk near one another at this point, so.
Yeah. All right, let me continue now.
That's probably good.
Yeah. So you have the lakeside. This is, this is a pretty nice one. You have, uh, um, I believe on this, you have 15 feet on the lakeside, 10 feet on the interior side. If you're good, I, I can jump off this. I don't want to continue. If you guys, we can look at the market street. That's really huge, but.
Yeah, let's jump to the market street.
Market street, okay. So here's the other lake one, lakeside. Hopefully it'll pass it's in here. There it is. So you look at sixteen and a half and then an eight feet of parking. So this one I believe is going to, it's kind of somewhat similar to what the Forge did with, uh, the Cauldron Street where it's, uh, I, I don't believe this one has like the raised curb. So it's supposed to be a shared space between pedestrians and traffic. Um, so you have a sixteen and a half, but then the parking area provides another eight feet. And then there's trees interspersed between the parking stalls. I would imagine would be in a great system. So.
I never did ask the question more, what is the speed limit here? I'm assuming it's 15 or under, but I, I don't know that I know that.
We haven't, we haven't, um, I, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't put the speed limit in the, in the actual code. Um, I know that developer's working with Don on that. Um, I don't know if Don was commenting on it, but I, I don't, I don't know if we have.
It was more of a G, just, I was curious if we knew.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we'll be, we'll be safe, so I'm not super stressed about it.
Morgan, what is the sidewalk width typically like in Salt Lake where they're eating on the sidewalks?
Um, and so in those areas, you, you have some public realm that has, it's like the space where the park strip would be. They, they, they created dining areas on Main Street. So it's, it's, it's public space. I'm not sure what the, what the width is. I'd have to look at it, but you're, you're a good 20 feet in some areas, uh, probably 15 to 20 on, on Main Street. Um, but you do have areas in downtown where you have what looks like 10 to 15 feet. And then there's public or there's private sidewalk that abuts the, the public sidewalk, um, near like City Creek and the gateway. They have areas like that. So they have, you know, areas that are, that are like 20 plus feet, but that's also private. Um, I haven't, I haven't personally measured. I've just spent a lot of time downtown, so I just got my own observations. I'd have to actually call and, and check, but.
Bronson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was, I just, my comment was that some of that outdoor dining actually happens in the private property, but it's on the street. So it, I mean, it looks like it's, it's out on the sidewalk, but it's actually, you know, in private property. Sometimes you'll see that situation where the building's setback a little bit. And that outdoor dining happens in private property.
Okay. And what was Jeff's feeling on this size? Did he feel like this was a typical size or is it going to start being like hard for people to walk past?
No, this, this was his design.
Okay.
And, and a lot of that had to do with cross shopping. You want it to be close enough so that you're, you know, you're eating dinner across the street and you look across and there's a shop or a boutique and you say, oh, I want to go over there and you just, it's a real comfortable walk and close across the street.
And, and remember too, this Lake Promenade on Market Street section that we're looking at right now is that shared street where you know, people are going back and forth, just like Nate said, that cross shopping, they're walking back and forth across the street and not just at corners or mid-block. It's, it's like a, a flow back and forth.
Yeah, very, very little vehicular traffic occurs here unless you're actually driving to park on this street.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, would you like me to go back to the, the condition page?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me try not to jack this up again.
And if, if, if we're ready, I'll, Morgan, I'm happy to make that motion if everyone's ready. If you'll put that back up so I don't mess it up too much.
Here, I'll, I'll throw this condition in here as well, the, the latest one.
While you type, I'm going to start reading if that's okay.
Yeah, so here's the, here's the first page and I'll jump to the second one when you get to it.
So should I just read all of that? Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying this includes the RDA funds, but it does.
Okay, so I'll just read everything. Um, I moved to approve the proposed Town Center Special Zoning District Three text and district map, district map amendment with the condition that the developer work with the city staff to define allowable tree types and planning, plannings permitted in each, uh, in each park strip type. And insert the following text into the administration section of the Town Center Code. If required, public improvements are not installed prior certificate of occupancy of associated buildings. The city may utilize, utilize RDA funds generated from this project area to bring public improvement to completion. Um, conditions continued. The city council will approve all amenities located within the public right of way and the city owned land. The planning commission will approve all elements of site plans for open space areas. Student housing will be added as a conditional use within the DTS and the DTMU districts. Requirement that following planning commission approval, the public works department shall approve construction drawings for all public infrastructure and open space areas. The low density side street section shall be amended to have a six, six to eight foot wide sidewalk and, and a nine to 11 wide park strip.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, all in favor, this would be done by roll call. So it'll be Christie.
Hi.
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 Hi, this is Julie, Chris.
Hi.
And John.
Hi.
Okay, it looks like it carried. And then I believe I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second. Okay, all three of you. That's excellent. I guess we're all in favor. Hi.
Hi.
You guys, this is really great. Thank you, Christie. All in favor. I, okay. So the great thing about this, and I think the, we've done a lot of really good work here and we've, it's been a little bit of a longer meeting, our two hours versus our 10 to 30 minutes, but I think it's important that we go over this because this is going to shape our city and I appreciate you taking the time and the patience and the extra questions and really thoroughly going through this because we're leaping into a new phase of our city and we're doing it together. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you all for working so hard on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Good job.
Bye.